So can I have a motion to induct Treasurer Slavens as tonight's clerk?
Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Treasurer Slavens as temporary clerk.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Berninski.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Seacrest is not here. Treasurer Slavens, good evening. Snyderman is not here as well.
Thank you. So we are going to be going just to close session if the board votes to do so, just to let everybody know here and the regular board meeting starts at seven. So, oh, should I do it now? Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I motion to go into closed session under Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268, to consult with an attorney regarding pending litigation in the case Outdoor 1 versus Canton Township.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. Can we do a roll call on that, please?
Berninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Ganguly.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Slavens, aye.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session and we'll be back at seven o'clock. Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski, all those in, I'm sorry, Trustee Foster, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, the next item on the agenda, we are starting our regular board meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with some changes?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we adopt the agenda, removing G3, G16, and adding G0, which would be consider approval of recommendation for settlement of pending litigation in Outdoor 1 Communication LLC versus Charter Township of Canton.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 15th and 22nd, 2023?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I, no, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public comment on agenda items only. So agenda items only. So this, you'll have three minutes to talk about anything that's on the agenda so the board can consider what you're saying when we vote on the items. This will not be a response time. This is just us listening to your opinion on agenda items only. So let's start with that. I will look online for attendees. Anyone online, if you would like to speak to the agenda items only, please raise your hand electronically. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, anyone in the room on agenda items only, would you like to speak? Agenda items only. Okay, please go to the podium, please, and then state your name and your address. At the, we will also have another public comment section later on. This is just for agenda items. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Mike O'Malley, 3771 Shepherd Boulevard. And just wanted to make mention of, there's an increase in taxes proposed, and I wonder why, as we are increasing our value every day here in Canton, therefore, the amount of tax that is raised is increased every day. I'd sure like to see what was spent by the city, the township, over the last couple, three years, how it was spent, and why do we really need an increase? It seems like, once somebody is in office, their attitude is, we want to leave a mark so everybody knows we were here. That seems a bit ridiculous, and we got to start tightening a belt. This is not Washington. And we got to tighten the belt, and we got to understand that the people that are out here are not everybody living high off the hog. Thank you.
Thank you. Just another comment. So we are having a public hearing on the approval of the millage rate, so if anyone's here about that, you can speak at a later time during that agenda item because it is considered a public hearing. Okay, but thank you. Anyone else on agenda items only, other than the public hearing, because we will let you speak during the public hearing? No? Okay, thank you. All right, now we will have a presentation of Cherry Hill Village programming. Anne Conklin will come to the podium, and we will have a presentation.
Yes, we will.
Thanks, Anne.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity for us to be here tonight to tell our story of the past year. I am here representing the entire Partnership for the Arts Board. For over 20 years, the partnership has believed in Canton's vision of creating a destination in Cherry Hill Village for the entire community. Initially, we contributed financially to the construction of the theater, and then for almost 10 years, we provided funding to help launch many of the arts organizations, as well as support many of those organizations that are now a staple in the Canton community. Over the years, the leaders of the partnership never wavered in their belief of the vision to create a vibrant destination for the entire community, for the entire community. And ultimately, we purchased the property now commonly known as the Village Arts Factory, and we totally renovated two of the three historically significant buildings on the property. And with the opening of the Village Warehouse in March of 2020, we became the home to 14 small businesses, with the majority of them being minority-owned businesses. Our mostly volunteer organization, in collaboration with our tenants, began to offer programs that brought the community together and to help create a sense of place and connect the community through the arts.
Us on this one?
As I said, we have 14 small businesses, and several representatives from the Cherry Hills Potter Guild are here tonight. They are our anchor tenant, and they have worked tirelessly, along with our other tenants, to offer programs and activities. Cherry Hill Potter Guild will tell you that they are at capacity with the number of guild members that they can have and the number of students and classes that they are offering. They participate in all of the events that we have at Cherry Hill Village and truly have done a great job, as well as all of our tenants have, of connecting with the entire community. We have three businesses in our building that they use that as, to produce their products. They produce skincare products, art products, candles, and soap. And we estimate on a weekly basis, we have over 500 students attending the different classes and programs that are held within the workshop. Your vision last year to create the Community Program Director position in collaboration with the partnership brought awareness, vitality, and most importantly, people to Cherry Hill Village. In just one year, it is evident that through the arts and with strong partnerships, the vision of creating a vibrant destination that connects the community, fosters a sense of place, and has an undeniable economic impact is becoming a reality. We've provided each of you with a summary of the past year, and tonight Kevin Ryan, who's done a remarkable job serving as the Community Program Director, will share some of the highlights of the program and events that have made Cherry Hill Village a destination. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Ryan, and I serve as the Community Program Director for Cherry Hill Village, which is a result of this service agreement between Canton Township and the Partnership for the Arts. I think most of us can agree, those of us who are working down in Cherry Hill Village, that this has been a banner year for Cherry Hill, for the village, not only in terms of the amount of programs and activities taking place down in Cherry Hill Village, but also with a newfound sense of enthusiasm from the residents who live there. Both in passing and directly, many residents have shared with us that, for the first time, they're starting to see glimmers of the future of Cherry Hill Village, a very active, vital place where their families can engage with the arts, music, food, and culture. So it's been a great year for us. This morning, someone asked me, are you a little nervous about giving a presentation tonight? And I have to say, no. I am so proud of what's happened this past year and the incredible things taking place in the village that I'm more than anything excited to share that with you today. So I'd like to start by highlighting a couple of our programs that we've engaged with this year. The first is one of our banner flagship programs, which we are calling our pop-up series. These are small, very popular programs that we've launched throughout the year, utilizing not only the Village Arts Factory, but many of the spaces, the community gathering spaces in Cherry Hill Village. These are small and nimble, perhaps partnering with just one or two tenants or business owners, some food and live music, and an opportunity for the community to get hands-on with art and culture. A few that you can see here on the screen. On the far left side, we led an adult pop-up series centered around fitness, and we partnered with Personal Pilates and Fitness and held six of these events throughout the year, where adults throughout Canton Township could come to the Arts Factory and experience a variety of different fitness styles, including, as you see, a bar class, Pilates, yoga, all that kind of stuff as well. At the top right, you'll see Leslie Neal, who's the owner of True To You Blend Bar at the Arts Factory. We had a wonderfully successful Fall Into Art pop-up series last fall on the Fridays of October. And this event was held at the Cherry Hill School, and it was an opportunity for families to bring their kids. The kids were able to make candles and learn the candle-making process, and they also got to go home with pumpkins that they decorated, enjoy pizza and cider and donuts and live music as well. So wonderful family event, and free, I might add. And then at the bottom right, the Cherry Hill Potters Guild, who are represented here today, led us in a pop-up event in last fall as well, where the community members were invited into the studio to play in the clay, as they say, use the potter's wheel, get a feel for what it feels like to make pottery. And so these pop-up events not only are successful with community building, but there's also a reciprocal economic impact that they have, especially for these business owners. Perhaps somebody attended the candle-making pop-up and realized, actually, I really enjoy doing this, and so signed up for future classes at the Arts Factory with her. Or maybe someone who was playing in the clay found a new artistic passion, making ceramics and pottery, and thus became members of the Potters Guild. So there's this wonderful reciprocal relationship when we do these pop-ups with our tenants and other business owners in the community. John, you can go back, it's fine. So we had 10 pop-ups total for the past year, from July to July. And most recently, not included in those numbers, we had a very successful Yoga in the Village series this summer, most recently. And over 350 to 500 people attended these pop-ups throughout the year. Some were very small, 10 people, and then some had almost 200. And we could take a look at a couple of data facts here and numbers from the past year. In the last 12 months, which would be July to July, in terms of the agreement, we held three festivals in Cherry Hill Village. The Christmas in the Village, the Cherry Hill Village Festival, as well as Art in Bloom. And most recently, which we'll report on next year, will be a fall festival at the end of September. We've held 50 special events tied to recreation and the arts throughout Cherry Hill Village and the Village Arts Factory, and 100-plus hours of programming, special programming in the village. And that, of course, does not include all the wonderful workshops and classes that our own studio tenants have every week. So in terms of special programming events, over 100 hours throughout the past year. Next slide, please. So our data showcased that we had 10,000 attendees this past year attend a partnership event in and around Cherry Hill Village. We were very proud of that number. Over this past year, something that we undertook was a website redevelopment, and as part of that process for us, they asked us to come up with a phrase or a motto that could really encapsulate the year ahead. And for us at the Arts Factory, we decided that motto was "Art for Everyone." And that phrase has really been the thread that's tied together most of our programming this year, making sure that our art programs and our community events are accessible to everyone regardless of ability or socioeconomic status, race, age, or gender. And so I'd like to highlight a couple of those efforts from this past year. The first was a new DEI statement that the partnership released this past year, which holds pride of place on our website and ends every one of our newsletters. So it's always in front of us, making sure that we're aligning with our own DEI statement. This past year, the Village Arts Factory was certified through Culture City as a sensory-sensitive venue, and it joins the Summit and a few other locations in Canton as that sensory-sensitive inclusive venue. A brainchild of our administrative manager, Jessica Galena, who is here with us today, is our new ACE program, which stands for Adaptive Creative Expression. This is an umbrella therapeutic arts program that we've designed, that takes place in Cherry Hill Village and the Arts Factory, that focuses on children between the ages of five and 12, who may have sensory sensitivities, physical disabilities, or developmental needs. And this is an opportunity for them to engage hands-on with the art, with arts, without the obstacles that often comes with having to go into a traditional art classroom or art setting. As part of this ACE program, we have launched monthly ACE workshops, utilizing different artists and different artistry. We've invited the kids and their families to come to the arts workshop for a variety of workshops, including leaf painting in the fall, gingerbread house making around Christmas time. And most recently, we partnered with iCode Canton here to offer a pixel art workshop, where the kids got to use laptops and adaptive technology to create empowering self-portraits of themselves using pixels, a great way to meld art and technology for these kids and their families. Besides the monthly ACE workshops, we also have worked with several of our studio tenants to offer weekly ACE classes, where those are incorporated into their regular programming. For instance, our Jumparama Gymnastics Studio offers specific adaptive ACE programs for kids to sign up for. Also, Rainy Motion Dance Studio as well, allowing kids to sign up for special classes where they can participate in these creative movement classes, even though they may have some sort of special need or disability that might prevent them from doing so in a traditional setting. I'd like to showcase a quote, John, if you will, from one of our parents who has an ACE child. "ACE has been a wonderful program for our son. We are always looking for fun and family-friendly activities that are centered around the special needs community. ACE is affordable and always willing to accommodate our son. It's also nice to connect with other parents or children with learning differences." And this is from Jacqueline, whose child has been attending many of our ACE programs. And then finally, I'd like to highlight, in terms of inclusion and accessibility, our Fine Art Gallery. The Arts Factory boasts a beautiful art exhibit space, and this past year really has encapsulated our motto for "Art for Everyone." Next slide, please. "Since the start of this new collaborative relationship, our art gallery has hosted 12 different art gallery exhibitions, really encapsulating the motto 'Art for Everyone.' We've included in the last 12 exhibitions a variety of different types of art, but also artists. Examples are listed in front of you, artists of color, LGBTQ+ artists, artists with autism. Young and elderly artists have exhibited with us, and both local and nationally-known artists. So a wide spectrum, allowing the community to really engage with art that comes from a variety of people and from a variety of backgrounds." You'll see on the picture there, our most recent exhibit was with Carl Davis, an elderly African-American gentleman, who's the father of one of our studio artists. He had an incredible exhibition encapsulating his lifetime and his experience with art. He was the creative director of marketing for the New York Times for many years before moving back to Canton, and so he was able to share that experience with us through his art and through the gallery exhibit. And finally, I'd like to speak a little bit about the economic impact of this new relationship. Truly, this agreement between the partnership and Canton Township has served as an engine for economic development in Cherry Hill Village. In front of you, a list is a list of many of the small, local businesses located in Cherry Hill Village and other entities that we have engaged with directly this past year, either through sponsorship opportunities or engaging with them in programming. I'd like to highlight three examples of how we've supported the growth of new business that had not yet been developed in the community. For instance, you can see on the top picture there, the Cherry Hill Village Pharmacy had just reopened when I took on this position, and we had begun this new arrangement. And so we partnered with him for one of our pop-up events and held the event at his pharmacy. He provided pizza and soda. We provided the chalk art and the artists and musicians. And in a way, he was able to have this really fun, grand opening of his pharmacy that connected with the community through art. And so it was a great opportunity for him to be like, hey, I'm here, I'm open, and also to engage with us with the art. Hazel Coffee Company, I'm sure many of you are aware, they have been Canton regulars for quite some time at the farmer's market. This summer, we've engaged with a new collaborative relationship with Hazel Coffee and invited them to come to the Village Arts Factory during weekdays to offer coffee to the community. This has been an enormously successful relationship, both for them and for us, drawing many members of the community down to the Village Arts Factory for mornings where they can enjoy coffee, the beautiful arts campus, community, and it's become a part of a lot of their daily rituals. Many positive comments for people, mothers in their strollers, friends groups who are walking down for their coffee and enjoying the common spaces in Cherry Hill Village. And then finally, Pizza Twist, which is one of the new restaurants and eateries that have opened up down in the village. Before they had even officially opened, we had invited them to participate in our Concerts in Cars series, where they were one of the sole food providers for us. So it was a really fun opportunity for them to showcase what they were bringing to the village in terms of really interesting pizza, but also for them to get exposure from the community before they were even open, that we're here, this is what our food tastes like, come check us out, we're opening shortly. So again, a great reciprocal relationship between some of the economic businesses and what we were accomplishing through artistic programming or community events in the village. As part of this relationship with the businesses, we held two, what we called "business mixers" throughout the year, an opportunity for the business owners and business leaders in the village to come together and enjoy a very informal evening of drinks and food, and really to help foster a sense of community with the business owners so that they don't see themselves as islands or individual business entities, but they start to see themselves as an integral part in the community in Cherry Hill Village, and what can each of them offer each other to really build up their businesses. Both events were wonderful opportunities for us to get to know the business owners, but also for them to get to know one another. It turns out many of them hadn't actually met their neighbors yet, and so it was a great opportunity for them to really start to form a sense of community. And I think this is reflected, too, in the sponsorships that these entities offered us at the Village Arts Factory for our events over the course of the year. Now remember, these aren't Amazon and the big entities that have a lot of money to give. These are the small, private businesses that are located in Cherry Hill Village. And because they have now come to really believe in what's taking place downtown, they have offered us the past year a total of $5,350 of their business money to help support the arts programs and the events that are taking place downtown. So I think that's a great showcase of how much they are also invested and believe in what's taking place down there. I'm going to turn this back over to Anne Conklin.
Thanks, Kevin. As you can see, there's a lot of exciting things happening right now. The post office has a motto, "Neither snow, nor rain, nor heat, nor gloom of night stays these careers from the swift completion of their rounds." Well, the partnership has adopted a new motto. Neither a worldwide pandemic, we opened the week the pandemic hit, nor complete road closure for seven months, nor the wrath of Mother Nature can stop us. We are resilient, we know we will persevere, we are committed to the vision, we will continue to do the hard work needed to succeed, we will grow our volunteer base, and we will work tirelessly to connect the residents and the business community to build a strong Cherry Hill community for the entire, to make it a destination for the entire Canton community. We are proud to serve as an anchor in Cherry Hill Village, we appreciate seeing all of you at our events, and we value the trust that this board has put in the partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne and Kevin. Very exciting presentation, and there's a lot of excitement happening in Cherry Hill Village, and you can see it in the pictures and the presentation we had. But does the board have any comments at all? Kate?
Yeah, just thank you very much for the presentation. If you wouldn't mind sending it to us electronically, I would love to, you know, review it again, because it's exciting. And I will say that I have been to several events, and I don't think I've been to Cherry Hill Village so much in the la, you know, that in prior years than as I have in this past year. So it's exciting. So thank you very much.
I will just say, I remember when the board had a board meeting at the Village Arts Factory in 2020, just before the world shut down, and we really, we're really excited at that time to open the factory and get a tour, really naive about what was going, what was coming ahead. But it is great to see how much you have grown and built and really have driven the community into an underutilized part of our community and, you know, created something really special. So congratulations on all of the hard work.
I just want to say ditto as well. Great presentation, and yeah, every month we see it growing more and more. So this is very exciting. This is, we've been waiting a long time for this, so thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and every, every month I wait to see what new program Kevin will come up with, and it's been very exciting. And I have been to the Carson Concert Series, and as a member of the Culture Commission, I also have volunteered for a few of these events, and it's always fun to see, not even people from just Canton, but people from outside Canton coming to these events. And, and I'm still on the waiting list for the potters, pottery class, so we'll see when that happens. And thank you.
Thank you. And it's not going unnoticed. All the work that's happening in Cherry Hill Village is not going unnoticed. We have businesses calling all the time, seeing how they can become a part of this. So they're seeing a lot of economic development there, which is going to affect our township. In the arts, of course, it's a healing. You use, you work with veterans, little kids, autistic kids, I mean, that's important for our community, and a community that has arts and culture is a successful community. So great job, everyone. And we have the former supervisor, Tom Yak, in the back there, so thank you for everything you've done to start this. It's, it's really a testament to everything you've worked on for a lot of years. So any other questions or comments? No? So more to come. John, I'm wondering if you could please give just a quick update about the rest of the square, the status of that, and just give everybody a status.
Sure, yeah. Kind of riding the momentum here and all the development that you mentioned. So the last board meeting, we approved an architectural design company to move forward with kind of creating what we're calling Phase Zero, which will include some earthwork to start helping address some of the parking that's out there before we move into some of the other areas, as well as help start to develop a water feature that we're going to have as part of the village square, which is going to be surrounding the area where the Cherry Hill School currently sits. So the Cherry Hill School will become a feature in the village area, kind of the center, if you will, the village square. And we'll be building a park around that, and we've got a lot of private developments, some different areas that are going to come up, you know, to kind of support that. So lots of momentum. As the supervisor said, we get inquiries daily now about how people can become part of the village. So we're excited. You've seen some development happening now out there with the grocery store and the bakery. That's just the tip of the iceberg of what's to come in the next, you know, 12 months or so. So we're, we're excited, lots of momentum. This is just, you know, the vision of it was to have programming to start building that activity, and it's certainly done that. The Village Arts Factory and the warehouse has become kind of a, you know, kind of a facilitator for that, and we look forward to more and more programming to kind of complement a lot of the development that's going to happen out there.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that, on the square itself? No? All right, thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. Exciting times to come. All right, next on the agenda, just to let everybody All right, next on the agenda, just to let everybody know, about an hour ago, our chief of fire, Chris Stockline, in order to celebrate first responders, we have our deputy chief here, Jamie, but our chief threw out the first pitch at the Detroit Tigers game today against Cincinnati, and he threw it to his wife, who was also a retired firefighter from Canton Township. So, unfortunately, we couldn't watch it on television, but we were proud of him, and we'll be able to watch it at the 11 o'clock news, I guess. All right, thank you. Is it all set, Trevor? The next item? Okay. Slowly. Can I have a motion to start the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, and I'm going to do a roll call vote on this, I move to open the public hearing on the millage rates for the December 1, 2023 tax levy. Borninsky?
You need a second or no? Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Burninsky.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Slavin's? Aye.
Thank you. The Township Board is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed December 1, 2023 millage rates. The 2023 millage rates must be certified to Wayne County by September 30, 2023. The millage rates requested are required to balance the fiscal year 2024 budget. The combined millage rates of 12.2909 mills for the December 1, 2023 levy is the same as the fiscal year 2023 millage rate. There is not a required headly rollback of the roads millage. Director Trumbull, would you like to give any comment on that?
Sure, just real quick, we presented the 2024 budget at a study session to the board back in, I think it was February or March this last year, taking into account some of the priorities that the board had set and some of the positions that had been established, and we were able to do that within the existing millage rate, the millage levy that the board had previously had in 2023. So, while the taxable value for the, all the properties, there was an inflation factor this year of about 5% that the state had rolled out, and again, the taxable value of all properties goes up by the lesser of inflation or 5%. I think inflation actually ended up about 7% for this year, so it is capped at 5%. And so, we will have an increase in taxes this year by about 5%, but we are not doing that as a result of an increased levy, that's strictly as a result of the increase of the taxable value of the residents' properties. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. So, you're saying we're going up just the 5% based on the state requirements? The township itself has not raised any millages?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so, as part of the public hearing, you can come up and make comment for three minutes, and then when we close the hearing, the board can speak on it. So, anyone want to speak on the public hearing regarding the taxes? We've had one already, anyone else? This is a public hearing on the tax millage rate, yes, if you want to go up and speak on that. There'll be a public comment at the end of the meeting, yes. Let me look online, I think I can get online right, Trevor. Do any of our online attendees want to speak about the public hearing? We have one, two, about seven of you, would you, if you'd like to raise your hand electronically, I can call on you for the public hearing. Nope, going once, I don't see anyone going twice, three times, okay. Anyone else for the public hearing? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we close a public hearing.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Does the board have any comments they'd like to make at all?
I just, real quick, I want to, you know, thank Wendy, she's always very helpful with us, and you know, looking back since 2019, we've not changed the millage rate, it has stayed the same. So, I appreciate all your work.
Kate?
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is a vote that we're required to take annually.
Correct, these are, the county has to certify all the taxes by October 1st, so we have to submit our tax forms to the county for them to certify them. So, we have to do a public hearing before that date, so we can certify that with the county.
What else? No? So, as we've said, it's only the 5% inflation rate required by the state, the township is not raising any millage rates, just the state requirement. Okay, and there is actually, just to let everyone know, you can go online and you can see what the taxes are, the millage rates are across the state, and you're going to see that Canton Township is one of the lower millage rates in the state, and we still have the lowest millage rate in Wayne County. So, our finance team and our staff are doing a great job at keeping things low, so we have not raised anything, it's just the state inflation requirement. Okay, thank you. Next, I would like to read something into public record. We promised to the township, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have to vote. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, Madam Supervisor, I move that the millage rates to be levied by Canton Township on December 1, 2023 be set as followed. The charter general fund, 1.4760, fire protection, 3.7480, police protection, 5.6760, and road assessment, 1.3909, for a total of 12.2909.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Burninsky, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, sorry, now I will get to read the statement. We talked about during the flooding and the tornado that we would give a debrief to the community, and I just wanted to let everybody know, we've all, we all had a fun time not too long ago, August 24th and 25th, and I wanted to give a summary of what the township employees did and what was happening in the township during those two days, and we wanted to read this into record. On August 24th, Canton Township and surrounding communities experienced an unprecedented historical heavy rainfall within six hours from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. According to the National Weather Service, thunderstorms producing torrential rainfall led to flash flooding in the Detroit metro area early Thursday morning. Western Wayne County into Monroe County was hardest hit, resulting in widespread residential flooding, road closures, and stranded vehicles. Most notable was the closure of Dingle Drive at Detroit Metro Airport, which cut off access to the McNamara Terminal for several hours. A lengthy closure of I-94 at 275 was also reported. Numerous rainfall totals in the 3 to 7 inches were reported mostly in the six-hour period from midnight to 6:00 AM. The highest total was 7.36 inches from a station in Belleville, a 24-hour total nearly of which fell during this event. In Canton, we experienced 4 to 6 inches across the township. Public safety dispatchers received 1,200 calls in 12 hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Police were dispatched to several roads with increasing standing water and began to assist motorists out of their vehicles as well as shut down roadways. The assistance to residents continued throughout the day as police helped numerous individuals who found themselves in unsafe situations, whether through accidents or intentional acts, submerged in water, and often in a state of panic. Officers carried out a wide range of responsibilities, including conducting welfare checks, assisting with downed power lines, responding to medical emergencies, addressing gas leaks, attending to alarms, aiding citizens in distress, resolving disorderly conduct incidents, managing mental health crises, and handling assaults and civil disputes. Furthermore, officers entered floodwaters to rescue stranded individuals, demonstrating their commitment to public safety and community's well-being during this challenging weather event. Police employees worked over 13 total hours during the emergency, but no overtime hours were storm-related. The Fire Department deployed 143 resources to 132 calls over a 48-hour period, responding to 58 medicals, 27 water rescues, flood assessments, utility pole issues, 19 fire alarms, 11 wires down, four public assists, three motor vehicle accidents, three company alarms, and one structured fire, to name a few of the calls. The department had 29 calls for service after midnight within an eight-hour period. Firefighters were also deployed in water rescue suits, pulling residents from their vehicles, extinguished a structured fire, and investigated all types of incidents, including lightning strikes. Fire crews continued to respond to over 162 calls for service over the next six days, tirelessly to rescue and assist citizens. They continued to work throughout the next six days, helping residents after both storms. Our emergency manager began communicating with teams to determine whether or not to declare an emergency in Canton Township. Working with Wayne County and calling in the MSP, State Police, emergency assessments of the township began. Later that day, the emergency manager flew over the area with the state police and myself to determine the damage. A petition was filed with the supervisor, with myself and the state police to declare a state of emergency and brace for the next oncoming storm later that evening, as about 9 o'clock. Our communications teams released caution information about several roadways that had standing water in the Canton community. They continued to react and communicate to residents throughout the day on social media and websites and cable television, including releasing a video from Chief Chad Bao and myself. The communications team took the lead on ensuring that timely updates approved by the Canton supervisor were released regarding early morning flooding, road closures, severe weather updates, GFL collection updates, as well as responding to inquiries from residents. Our DPW team received over 300 calls regarding flooding and 150 calls from residents with flooded basements. The DPW teams checked drains, put up signage on flooded roads, and went into residents' basements to ensure sewage was not coming up into the basement as they received their calls. One of our administrators could not make it in due to floodwaters and took calls from her home, dispatching what she could. The DPW teams also put up barriers where they could, removed trees, and blockaded what they could to prevent drivers from driving into flooded areas. They continued to work throughout the next six days, helping residents after both storms. Building inspection assisted with inspecting buildings after the tornado and flooding to ensure safety for our residents. Facilities assisted with building inspections and flood curing at township properties, as well as some local businesses. Parks team assisted public safety where possible and blocked roads with trucks to stop motorists from getting stuck. They also assisted with barricades and guiding residents to safety. The summit was open for residents to come for the day and determine if any needed shelter. We did shelter one in a hotel later that evening. Our recreation supervisor came in at 11:30 PM to open the summit for residents that were seeking shelter from the storms on Thursday night. The Parks employees as a group assisted with blocking roads on August 24th during the flood, and were instrumental in cleanup of trees, debris, and pavilion cleanup after the tornado. The supervisors released information on WWJ radio, video, and our cable stations to warn residents to stay out of standing water and to turn around. We also fielded calls from residents who were calling regarding flooded roads and basements, and we flew over the area to determine the damage. We worked continually with the state police and emergency manager to declare a state of emergency and communicate with local, state, county, and federal agencies consistently, also with the help of Congresswoman Debbie Dingell. The Clerk's Office and the Treasurer's Office fielded hundreds of calls from residents, forwarded to DPW, and assisted with logging for our mapping of where the damaged sites were. A Clerk's Office staff member also helped with the assessments of residents during the week of the 28th. Finance Department was on call to handle all purchasing-related needs, including raising card limits and approving emergency purchase orders. The financial management system was set up properly to account for any storm-related expenses, to organize the township costs, to solicit insurance and any government assistance. Additionally, payroll was modified to account for overtime that employees were working, relative to any storm-related damage to property, account for employee time. The HR team assisted with scheduling and approving employees for overtime, and our ITI team made sure they kept everything up and running for our computers and our communication. August 24th, 10:30 PM, a lot of you probably remember the emergency signals that you received on your phones. After power went out and high winds and tornado passed through the National Weather Service, this is what was reported. There were the most tornadoes in a single day during the month of August in Michigan. Six tornadoes impacted southeast Michigan with seven tornadoes statewide. Rapidly developing thunderstorms began to pop up over central and southwest lower Michigan by the early evening hours of August 24th, with the exceptional moisture and instability in place over southern lower Michigan. The storms quickly grew upscale and became severe, leading to a west-east line of severe thunderstorms which dropped south through southeast Michigan during the evening hours. Strong winds in the mid-levels allowed for damaging winds to be the primary hazard, with areas of southeast Michigan seeing 60 to 80 miles per hour wind gusts, which led to extensive tree damage and power outages. At the peak, close to 500,000 customers lost power in southern lower Michigan. The day after the high winds and tornado, power was out due to a major portion of Canton and lights at corners were not working. Water had pulled back, but many were without power and therefore communications. An EF-0 tornado touched down in Canton at 10:30 PM that night, and much of Canton and the region were out of power. Our heritage park experienced trees knocked down, the splash pad sales pads being twisted, and our three picnic pavilions completely destroyed before moving into neighborhoods and throwing more trees around. Canton Township itself lost a lot of trees, including a house on Sheldon north of Michigan, having a tree thrown through the roof. Our teams again sprang into action, assisting residents in the community. We joined the county through Debbie Dingell and Warren Evans, who had visited other damaged regions throughout southeast Michigan, and even next door to us, Romulus and Van Buren Township. We all filed for emergency status in order to make sure that our residents were covered if we needed to be. The filing was complete, the assessments were completed on September 6th, and we await the state's answer to our state of emergency request. Public safety again continued to receive calls and dispatch public safety officers to areas damaged by high wind and tornadoes. Police were dispatched, fire continued to respond throughout the data areas, our emergency manager continued to work with teams on managing the emergency situation. We trained, we brought in about 40 residents to help do emergency assessments at homes, and we did that throughout the weekend. This required just-in-time training by the Michigan State Police prior to deploying. Our communications continued to release information about storm damage and what residents should do, then continued working through the weekend with the supervisor on communications to residents and the press. The communications team took lead on ensuring that accurate messages went out regarding local states of emergency, including Wayne County, Canton Township, and many other townships which actually joined in the following days. DPW cleared roads and sidewalks from fallen trees and continued to go to houses that called regarding their flooded basements. The teams also continued to put up barriers wherever they could, including blocking roads with trucks and removing trees from roads. Parks team cut down trees, if anyone was in the summit, you could see, it's clear of trees now, we had, all the trees were knocked over, and it's a very different-looking place right now. The Parks also worked with Michigan MSD to clear fallen trees, and cable filmed with drones and snapshots showing where tornado and straight wind damage was. Again, we worked throughout the weekend. ITI, a couple of days later, because of the power outages going up and down, our IT equipment started getting hot because the power was fluctuating. We also had to decide whether or not we had to move prisoners to another location and our dispatch services because our power losses kept going up and down. ITI staff worked with facilities until 2:00 AM to provide a stable temporary solution two nights in a row. So, that's just not even all of it, but you can see that the teams in Canton were helping residents, as well as keeping the township running as an emergency lifeline for the community, and I am proud, and I know the board is as well, for all the work. Over the next few days, what we need to understand is that when you flew above Canton, you could see that all the tributaries were full, there was nowhere for the water to go. The drains filled, the drains usually go into the tributaries, but they had nowhere to go, so the drains filled up, and that's why you saw the water come up on some of the streets. Since then, I've met with the Conference of Western Wayne, Wayne County, and the state, there are a lot of things that we're looking at. One, Van Buren, Kevin McNamara, talked about floating a bond, having the state float a bond, so that we could look at how we clean up all the drains and start from scratch. We've also looked at things like setting up separate district water management areas to look at how we start doing what we're doing. The storms are going to continue, as we see, this is happening across the country, across the world. We know the storms are getting stronger and more frequent, and we are working as much as we can with all of our partners to figure out what to do next. So, I just wanted to read that into the record. In a couple of weeks, we're going to have a study session where our emergency manager's going to come, and he's going to give us more detailed numbers. But any questions from the boards? I know you guys were a lot of part of it, elected officials going door-to-door.
Thank you for reading the statement into the record. How are you going to get that information out to folks who are part of the community, but A, may not be at the board meeting, or may not watch the board meeting?
That's a good, I mean, they could definitely watch this on video, on YouTube, but we can put it on Facebook, and we can have people refer through the focus to read it.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to our first responders and everyone who worked to meet the needs of residents during that time. I, you know, I heard from people that, you know, our folks were, you know, out and about in the community, and thank you to everyone who knocked on doors and, you know, just made sure that folks had their needs met during that time, so I just want to say thanks for that.
Thanks. We've gotten a lot of emails stating the same thing, Summer. Diane?
Just a quick comment, I too want to, I appreciate our first responders especially, the flooding and everything that was happening, and they were right there pulling people out of cars and assisting our residents and all of our staff, everybody, all hands on deck, so. residents and all of our staff, everybody, all hands on deck, so I appreciate all the hard work that everybody did during this turbulent time.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank the first responders, all the volunteers that went door-to-door to gather information about the damage, and also to our emergency manager who was working tirelessly with, you know, to inform everybody, and, you know, we were getting emails on how things were going, and hopefully we can get this, the document right now that our supervisor read, we can put it somewhere on our website so that people can see what we have done, what the township, the government has done in the last few weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I echo what my colleagues have said. I also am very proud of the work that our first responders did. I know it was overwhelming. And I also just wanted to highlight our community emergency response team because they were put into action, and they went door-to-door. I went one day with them. You could not find a better group of people who really care about our community and are willing to volunteer their time to go help anyone who needs help, and I will also say that the stories I heard that day were very, very moving. And I know our supervisor was there also, so just appreciated everyone who, you know, came together as a, as a community to help our community.
Thank you. And do you know that people were helping people out there also, which is good, but I do want to say, we did have a lot of people that were going around barriers, which is dangerous, so I'm going to put that in the focus also, you know, when you see a barricade up with a flooded road and trucks across roads, you shouldn't go around them. We saw a lot of people going up on the grass to get around our trucks and getting stuck, and then looking around and asking for help to get out of the water, and so, and also four-way stops. Our emergency manager, the second day, because the power was out, he was T-boned coming through the intersection to work to help people, and it's just because people were not stopping at those four ways. So when we have emergency situations, it's really important to look and see what's ahead of you and turn around when you're asked to do that, so I can't stress that enough. All right, thank you. Well, on with the general count, no, you can do it during public comment, during public, you can, during public comment, okay. We'll have public comment at the end, so consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I motion on the consent calendar, C1, payment for environmental assessment work at 50525 Cherry Hill by AKT Peerless Environment Services. C2, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to the Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinance regarding Ford and Napier rezoning. C3, consider second reading of adoption of an amendment to the Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinance regarding NAMI rezoning. C4, consider approving a one-year software subscription renewal for LFTA. And C5, consider approving the annual licensing renewal of Power DMS.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Onto the general calendar, item G0.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the recommendation of the Township Legal Counsel in the case of Outdoor One Communications LLC versus Canton Township as discussed in the closed session to reject the facilitated settlement offer.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider approving the purchase of a replacement mail system.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of Neopost IX-7 Smart mailing machine from Quadrant in the following budget amendments. Increase revenue from the account listed in our packet, $11,675. Increase expense in the account listed in our packet for $14,675, and decrease expenditures listed in our packet for $3,000.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Any discussions on that one? I didn't think it would be, sorry. Was it G2 that was polled?
Not the G2.
G3, okay. G2, consider site plan for Motor City Electric Utilities Company.
whereas a project sponsor has requested approval of a site plan for Motor City Electric Utility Company at 5390 Belleville Road on the subject tax parcel listed in our packet, and the tax, all three of them, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the request and application or applicable criteria and voted nine to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton Code of Ordinance. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the Motor City Electric Utility Company site planning in the planning application number 132R-6993 at 5390 on the subject tax parcels listed in our packet, subject to all state.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. Motor City Electric is an electrical service contracting company at 5390 Belleville Road, which is located on the west side of Belleville Road between Michigan Avenue and Yost Road. Motor City Electric occupied the site in 2021 without a certificate of zoning compliance. It is seeking zoning approval as well as site plan approval at this time. The site was previously occupied by HW Motor Homes, and the applicant proposes the following changes to the site, which consists of nine parcels. Creating outdoor storage for materials is shown on the site plan with associated paved drives, expanding the parking lot on the north side of the site, construction of a detention basin south of the building and parking lot, related changes to landscaping, loading, dumpster enclosure, lighting, and fencing. At its meeting on January 11th, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan, subject to conditions. The plans have since been revised. To comply with these conditions, if the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. Director Norma, do you want to add anything? Thank you. Any questions? Summer, do you have anything to add before the questions?
No, nothing to add.
Anya?
So, this was discussed in January, so were we waiting for them to revise the site plans to bring this to the board? Just was curious about that.
Yes, that's correct. When the site plan was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, it was recommended for approval subject to several conditions. Among those conditions were subject to zoning Board of Appeals approval of certain variances, so that took place between January and tonight's meeting. Also, there were some other planner revisions that we were working through with the applicant separate from the variances that took a couple of rounds of review by staff, and that includes Planning Division staff, Engineering Division, the Fire Department, and Building Inspection Services Division. So it took a few months, just sometimes it takes some time to coordinate that with the applicants and their team and the township and their team, but everything moved forward positively.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes, passes. Item G4.
For model resolution, I move to approve the following budget amendment for tree removal and pruning services. Increase the account revenue listed in our packet for $25,000, and increase expense listed in our packet for $25,000, and I further move to approve the insurance. Hold on a second.
Madam Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this.
The agenda?
My motion.
Okay. Item G3, consider increase the purchase order 2023-1175 Cadillac Asphalt for the 2023 Major Roads Asphalt Project.
So Treasurer Slavens made an motion to amend again the agenda, right? Okay, so, so we are removing G4 and...
Keeping G3.
Keeping G3, so maybe we should do a motion on that.
Okay. Is there support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Okay. Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski, to remove G4 and keep G3. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase revenue for $150,000 in a account listed in our packet, and increase expenditures in the account listed in our packet for $150,000, and I further move to increase the purchase order for the 2023-1175 by $150,000 for the 2023 Major Roads.
With support?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. PO, as listed, was issued to Cadillac Asphalt on April 28, 2023 in the amount of $3,357,064.23, which includes a $305,188 contingency for the resurfacing of Lily Road and Lots Road, both Michigan to Palmer and Sheldon Road north of Warren. Change order number one was within the contingency amount but exhausted it. Change order number two is required due to a grade issue on Lily Road. Additional concrete grading and sidewalk work is necessary to complete the project. Therefore, Engineering Services requesting an increase of $150,000 to PO as listed. Any questions? Dave, do you want to make any? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. So now we're G5.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the 2023-2024 municipal credit contract between Smart and the Charter Township of Canton for $92,340, and to authorize a township supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The township submitted its annual municipal credit program application with Smart to provide funding for the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. Smart has notified the township it is eligible for $92,340 under the program from July 2023 through June 2024. Leisure Services is requesting the Township Board to approve municipal credit funding agreement with Smart and to allow the municipal credit funds to be transferred to the Nankin Transit Commission to manage the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. So the Transit Commission serves the Canton Mobility Program and provides curb-to-curb transportation services for Canton senior residents 55 years of age and older, as well as individuals with disabilities. The program utilizes 15 wheelchair-access connector buses to facilitate these services. The service area includes Canton, Westland, Wayne, Inkster, and Garden City. Sir Director Lefever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing really to add, just this helps offset our contract amount with Nankin Transit, who do a great job for us. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah?
Want to make a real quick comment. I'm on the Nankin Transit Commission with John, and we have a great group of people that help transport our folks around, and, you know, they work very hard, so this is a wonderful program.
Yeah, I agree with Treasurer Slavens. This is a great program and very needed. I do have a couple of questions. I noticed in the background information that we were given, it says that Nankin continues to provide great service to our residents with only a minimal percentage of rides being turned down. Can we get information about, like, why rides are being turned down?
Yeah, we, we do review those monthly as a commission. Those rides are typically a same-day service, and usually not for something like a doctor's appointment. It might be for more of a social trip, and it's really, if and when they are canceled is mainly based on demand, or service is being reduced that day for weather, different things like that. So it's a rare occasion that a ride is turned down, and if it is, it's not one that's been planned in advance.
Okay, thank you. My other, it's not really a question, it's kind of a request. I see the service area is Canton, Westland, Wayne, Inkster, and Garden City, and also going, I think, to St. Mary's in Livonia. I'm hoping that administration, in, you know, working with the supervisor's office and your department, John, if you could see if you can explore options for finding a way to expand beyond that service area.
Yeah, noted, definitely something we consistently talk about and work on. We'd love to be able to expand the service for our riders, right, to get outside of our borders. It's being part of a commission sometimes has some challenges with working with other communities, but definitely something that everybody's interested in, and we see the value in it, so we'll continue to push the envelope on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Summer?
I don't know if I necessarily need to say that, because this, but I just want to agree with Trustee Berninski. I would really love to look at expanding that program.
Yeah, I agree with both of them, and, you know, just not for the boundaries, also for, you know, accessibility to certain, you know, low-income communities, or, you know, some options that we can explore apart from seniors and people with disability, people who really need public transit, if we can help them. That's, that's, if you're exploring options, we can also try to explore that.
Very much so, for sure.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Consider approval of ground lessons subordination agreement on Arctic Edge Ice Arena.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the ground lessons for Arctic Edge Ice Arena, and further authorize a clerk and supervisor to execute the necessary documents.
With support?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. Arctic Edge is refinancing its mortgage with a new company and therefore needs authorization for a new subordination agreement. The new agreement changes the lender and the agreement. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
It's a pretty straightforward agreement, um, that basically puts the bank's interests before ours in terms of the lease, um, which we have received prepayment for all fifty years of the lease already at a dollar a year, so I think we're pretty well set on that.
Any questions?
Answer any other questions?
Any board questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider approval of two emergency purchase orders for golf course products and pump repair at Pheasant Run Golf Course.
Going to be in a few, um, uh, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, increase revenue, um, from the, um, account listed in our packet for thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and increase in expenditures, um, from the account listed in our packet miscellaneous township emergencies for thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Further move to approve the emergency purchase order to Nutrient AG Solutions, Inc., Sunfield Hub Sales at nine-eight-four-five West Grand Ledge Highway, Sunfield, Michigan, four-eight-eight-nine-zero, and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid from the account listed in our packet, um, for additional nutrients for the products at Pheasant Run Golf Club. And I further move to approve a purchase order to Pro Pump and Controls, Inc. at six-ten Old Mount Eden Road, Shelbyville, Kentucky, four-zero-zero-six-five, in the amount not to exceed nine thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid from the account listed in our packet to repair damage, to repair damage made to the pump on hole number twenty-six at Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. This year's unusually wet season and recent floods that occurred, Pheasant Run Golf Club is in need of additional nutrients and products to manage turf conditions for the remainder of the season. Due to the urgent nature of the flooding, a memo was sent to the Township Supervisor and Finance Director requesting to make an emergency purchase in accordance with the purchasing policy. Upon their approval, a purchase order was submitted. In accordance with the emergency purchase policy, the Leisure Services Department is requesting board approval for the emergency purchase order with Nutrient AG Solutions in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase additional nutrients and products for turf maintenance at Pheasant Run Golf Club. A budget amendment is necessary. Additionally, pump station on hole number twenty-six was damaged as well due to the flooding. Because the water levels, levels were so high, the pump was approximately three feet underwater, causing excessive damage to the pump. Pheasant Run staff contacted Pro Pump and Controls, registered vendor for a cost estimate and received a verbal quote of not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, this, uh, as, as stated in the, the motion there, the, all the damages were caused by the flood. The, the plant protectants are basically preventative for all the moisture, several of the, the greens, fairways, and tees were underwater for significant amount of time, which can lead to a lot of disease, which, um, can cause a lot of damage and loss of greens and those sorts of things, which can lead to loss of revenue, so we wanted to get those down as quickly as possible to prevent any disease from taking hold on the course.
Any questions from the board? Kate?
All right. Um, Greg, was this the west side of back, that, uh, that part of the golf course?
That was significantly affected, but there was, south side was affected, we had holes on the north side, there was pretty much all twenty-seven holes that were affected in some way.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, consider approval to upgrade Adobe Acrobat licenses.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of the purchase order to C D W Government for twenty-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents for the purchase of a one-oh-four Adobe Acrobat Pro twenty-twenty license.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. The I T I department is seeking approval to upgrade a hundred and four outdated licenses of Adobe Acrobat, which are currently in use on approximately one-third of the township computers. Dedicated budget line item already exists within the I T I Maintenance and Repair Software Support Account for the specific project. Purpose of this upgrade is to ensure that our software environment remains up to date, secure, and efficient. If anyone has any questions, we do have Devin online. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider request to engage E S R I professional services for software upgrade.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars payable to Environmental Services Research Institute, Inc. for consulting services in the upgrading of E S R I Enterprise.
With support, please. Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The township has been using geographic information system software for over two decades. This software has been instrumental in mapping property and land records, as well as public-owned utilities for over thirty-three thousand parcels within the township. We are seeking board approval to upgrade the Esri software and its supporting database. This upgrade involves engaging Esri professional services to support the I T I staff and G I S Coordinator in transitioning to the latest version of Esri's enterprise. This transition has also necessitates migrating the software to our latest database server to support the upgraded Esri enterprise version. Um, Devin is online, if anyone has questions, any questions or comments?
I just had a comment that, you know, we have to do all these, uh, software upgrades that are coming, I, from a I T background myself, that we have to keep on upgrading our softwares, because, you know, it's an I T, the very rapidly changing world, and if we are not upgrading, then we are not able to use the latest features, so the Acrobat licenses, this G I S software, even the network switches that come after this, um, are all needed for, um, uh, keeping our township, um, I T systems up to date.
Thank you, anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G ten, consider request to purchase network switch equipment upgrade phase one.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and ten cents payable to Centennial, Inc. for the purchase of Meraki networking equipment and support.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. I T I Services is requesting permission to upgrade a portion of the township's computer and phone networking infrastructure. Support and warranties for most of the current network equipment recently expired in May twenty-two-three or will expire shortly in September. I T I is seeking to replace a portion of the networking equipment in twenty-two-three, another portion in twenty-two-four, and the final components in twenty-two-five. The I T I director selected the Meraki brand of networking equipment based on his positive experience from Meraki Equipment and parent company Cisco. The Meraki brand of networking equipment offers cloud-based administration and advanced security. Meraki also has a simplified user interface that allows junior I T I staff to easily learn how to make configuration changes. The existing township network equipment was deployed in twenty-thousand, twenty-seventeen and is no longer under standard support by the manufacturer. Without active support and maintenance of the township's switch operating system, there's a likelihood for future network issues due to incompatibility, incompatibility of new applications with the current operating system. So Devin is online, if anyone has any questions or comments. Kate?
I have a question, um, Devin. It's, it looks like, um, the support and warranties either expired in May or will expire in September. Um, is that for all of these switches? Because I'm wondering, we're only talking about replacing some of them in twenty-two-three and then more, um, in twenty-two-four, and finally, um, the last bit in twenty-two-five. So wondering if all of the support and warranties are expired, or if, um, we're just replacing the ones this year that are expiring this year?
Devin, you're okay? Devin, you're okay to talk.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, so a part of, uh, this upgrade, due to the cost, we, we are spreading it out in three phases. Um, and some of, some of the equipment that we are targeting now is some of the, um, expiration of the warranties, um, that is occurring, so the, the May of twenty-two-three, and also, as of now, um, September, uh, those are, um, the ones that we are targeting, targeting to replace first. Um, we have been replacing, um, switches, um, as needed, um, but we do plan to, uh, extend this over a three-year period.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the ones that are not being replaced yet are still under warranty or being supported?
Um, I will have to get some clarification on, uh, if everything is actually expired. Um, so can I get back to you on that question?
Sure. Yeah, just, um, if we are, are not replacing ones that are, that have expired or, um, are losing their support, can we make sure we have a plan for how we're going to deal with any issues that might arise?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a note of that and have Victor address that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. G eleven, consider approving payment of the balance owed to Sutfin Corporation due to a change order.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve payment of the balance owed to Sutfin Corporation in the amount of two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and twenty cents due to a change order that occurred after the original order.
Support. Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Canton Fire Department is requesting approval to pay the outstanding balance owed to Sutfin Corporation in the amount of twenty thousand, two thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, twenty cents, due to a change order that was applied to the original purchase in twenty-two-one and invoiced in August of twenty-two-three. The Biddy, would, Jame, would you like to say anything?
Really no comment, except for we're excited to get these trucks here in the next couple, well, next couple of weeks. We're expecting them to be here on the fifteenth, but, I don't know, it's taken two years to get them, so we're just going to hold our breath and hopefully they'll get here.
Any questions or comments? Kate?
Can you let us know when they come, so we can come see them?
Press release, for sure.
Yes, we want a ride. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G twelve, consider creating and filling an embedded police clinician position with associated amendment to the twenty-two-three opioid settlement budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation and filling of an embedded police clinician, and additionally, I move to approve the low-listed amendment to the twenty-two-three opioid settlement budget listed in our packet.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. The Police Department is requesting a new non-union classified position of embedded police clinician be created and filled. This new job description and factor analysis of pay grade seven was approved at the Mayor Commission meeting held on August twenty-first, twenty-two-three. The department is also requesting amendments to the twenty-two-three opioid settlement budgets for the salary and fringe benefits of this position. Director Bow, do you want to add anything?
Real quick, this has been a successful program as a pilot, as a contracted service moving for into this position. Having a direct hire in our organization, um, really takes away, um, some of the, answering the two bosses, you know, we have a, um, a vendor in-house that really is answering not only to the contractor, but also to, uh, our police department, our public safety department in the township, and I think it really puts us in a better situation to, uh, serve the citizens.
Thank you, and as it says in the background, you know, this clinician that we have now in twenty-two-two received a total of four-hundred-and-forty referrals for service of our residents that range from domestic disputes to suicidal persons, so you can see the Canton community as well as surrounding areas really need this service. Any questions or comments?
Say that I'm happy to see this, um, come before the board. I know we met about this, um, a few months ago, and it was clear that this was the pathway forward. Um, the clinician that we have was really a part of our team, so it's great to bring her on as an employee of Canton Township and not, um, through a consulting role.
Oh, uh, okay. I just, yeah, I agree with, uh, Summer that, you know, we need this, uh, and we are bringing it in-house so that, you know, we have this person, and hopefully, uh, seeing how many referrals we are get, getting, maybe in the future, we can expand these options and...
Yeah, I, um, echo Trustee Foster and Trustee Ganguly. Um, this is a really important, uh, program that we have, and, um, just wanted to thank you, Director Baugh, for, uh, all your hard work on this. I know you've been working on it a long time, so, thank you.
Community needs it, okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G thirteen, consider waiving the bidding process and purchase office furniture.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve waiving the bidding process and purchase o- office furniture in the amount of fourteen thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents from Kentwood Office Furniture.
Support.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police Department is requesting to purchase office furniture for the new Social Workers New Office and two tables and chairs for use in the patrol division from Kentwood Office Furniture in the amount of fourteen thousand, forty-four dollars, eighty-four cents. The department is also requesting to waive the bidding process and purchases furniture from Kentwood to stay consistent with the current furnishing within the building's new renovation. Just for those who don't know, we're almost finished with renovation, I mean, it's been two years, I think, a year and a half.
Quicker than the fire trucks.
Quicker than the fire trucks, that's right. Quicker than we get fire trucks. But yeah, the, it's looking great, I know everybody's been moving around while walls have been moved and the dispatch center being, um, increased because of all the calls that we get during the day and night. Uh, Director Bow, do you have anything to add?
Only thing I would add, it just allows for uniformity of furniture within the organization, especially with the new building. Company, uh, was our preferred vendor in the past, but they're, um, mature in the past, so...
Questions or comments from the board? Tanya?
Yeah, we would like to come for a visit when all this is done, along with the fire engines.
We need a ribbon cutting. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G fourteen, consider approving a memo of understanding with Growth Works for the expansion of Canton's youth diversion program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the one-year memo of understanding with Growth Works to expand Canton's youth diversion program for fees not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars with automatic annual renewals until terminated by either party.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police Department is requesting board approval to renew a one-year member, memo of understanding, expanding their youth diversion program with Growth Works to include funding for out-of-county residents to participate in the rehabilitation services offered for up to twenty-five thousand. This M O U includes automatic annual renewals unless terminated by either pow, uh, party. In two thousand nineteen, the Police Department and Growth Works started a diversion service for juveniles who commit offenses in Canton. The program has been free for the youth, but a critical qualifier of the grant funding is that the... is that the participant must be a resident of Wayne County. In one year, 14 juveniles would have otherwise qualified for the program were denied due to their out-of-county resident status. Growth Work estimates approximately $2,000 per juvenile participant. The department is requesting to establish a blanket purchase order in the amount of $25,000 to use as their invoice for monthly for services. Director Bowe, do you want to add anything?
Apparently, this has been a successful program with us as we find different ways to handle some of the lower-level offenses that juveniles find themselves in with their families. Program expansion for this year, if you look at the contracted services, you'll see the case management. Growth Works and Health, I'm sorry. The only program expansion is under contracted services is they're adding a section where they do some case management for the diversion program.
All right, any questions from the board? Questions or comments? Summer?
I just want to say yay. We've been talking about this for a while and so I'm glad to see it happening. I didn't realize that we had 14 folks who would have qualified but for their county status, so I'm just happy that this is getting done.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G15, consider creating and filling a public safety IT systems coordinator position.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation and filling of the public safety IT systems coordinator position.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Police and Fire Departments are requesting a new position of public safety IT systems coordinator be created and filled. This new job description and factor analysis of pay grade seven was approved at the Merit Commission meeting held on August 21st. As presented to the trustees of the Township Board Study Session on May 2nd, the Canton Police and Fire Departments analyzed their current needs regarding the PSD IT system support and are recommending restructuring away from the current combined dispatch supervisor IT position and are requesting a dedicated full-time PSD IT systems coordinator dedicated to the police and fire-specific IT needs. This position will have technical and administrative responsibilities for the police and fire departments, including the emergency dispatch center. The position assumes critical responsibility overseeing the substantially valued public safety IT systems resources, ensuring seamless functionality for first responders and the community they serve. The departments are currently negotiating with in-house bargaining units to create two dedicated dispatch supervisor positions. Just to let everybody know, you still, they will still work closely with IT because technology is moving ahead so rapidly. This position is important and we want to make sure that we're congruent across all of our departments. Director Bowe or Deputy Jamie, do you want to add anything?
No further comment.
Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G17, consider waiving the bidding. An approved proposal from Emco Incorporated for an external promotion process. G17.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the waiving the bidding process and accept the proposal from Emco Inc. for the external process for municipal services director for a total not to exceed $9,500.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Request is being made to waive the bidding process and accept the proposal from Emco to run an external process for the position of municipal services director. This process would establish a one-year eligibility list as outlined in the merit policy. The cost for a full assessment center for four candidates would be $9,500. The municipal services director position is currently vacant. David Norwood, deputy supervisor, has temporarily been promoted into the position. However, there's a need to permanently fill the position. The MSD Director is responsible for five divisions within the township that include engineering, planning, building, public works, and facilities. Emco will provide the township with an independent review of candidates through a full assessment center. The township has utilized Emco previously for the MSD Director opening and more recently for information technology innovation director opening. Emco is an established leader in hiring and promotional processes. The goal is to move the process forward as quickly as possible to ensure the forward progress of the township, but Dave is doing a great job. Deputy Supervisor, do you have anything to add to that?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
We also have Rochelle Howell, our HR manager, online to answer any questions. Any questions or comments from the board? Kate?
So if this is approved tonight, do we have a timeline of when they're gonna get going with this and when we're hopefully gonna have someone hired by?
I would defer to Rochelle on that question. I believe she does have a timeline.
Hello Rochelle, you're on. Go ahead.
Thank you Supervisor. We do have a timeline established for the process. Going through the complete process, the goal would be to have a person start by January of 2024. We will have the posting up tomorrow if it is approved this evening and we will be moving very swiftly with all of the steps that it takes to complete an assessment center, to also come in and do a second round of interviews after the fulfillment of the assessment center and to get a candidate through the hiring process.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. All right, now we move into the public comment section. It's three minutes. If you have any questions, you can let us know. It's not, it's for us to listen to you and we can get back to you later or the staff, you can speak to the staff afterwards or us afterwards. So I'm gonna start online with our attendees. If you have any public comment, please raise your hand electronically. Any public comment online? No public comment online? Okay, not seeing any, okay. In the room, any public comment? Yes, just go to the podium. Yep, give your name and make a comment. Three minutes, please, thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for their indulgence of the next couple of minutes. I know the hour is late, I'll try to speak quickly. I'd also like to thank my neighbors and friends for coming to support this topic tonight. The issue that we want to bring to you is an issue really regarding zoning, a difficulty with one of the zoning regulations that is causing a lot of us problems. We'd like to propose a solution. We live on six and a half acres just north of Mayman Road and myself and some neighbors in our area keep hobby chickens and have done so for several years. They've born us up through, you know, COVID and the emotional stress of that. Our kids grew up with these chickens and learned to care for things. It was much to our surprise that in February of this year, Officer Mark Lodgston of the Ordinance Enforcement came and told us that we couldn't keep chickens in Zone R1. It is something that we started to research to understand what exactly the zoning requirements were and we looked through everything in R1 regulations. There's nothing that prohibited chickens. And in fact, we found that we could have a stable with up to six horses on a property of our side. We have, you know, kennels and so forth. So got in touch with Mark and said, you know, what's going on here? He indicated that yes, there is no restriction against chickens in zoning R1. However, it's indirectly implied because chicken raising for agricultural purposes is in RA and there's a separate stipulation, another part of the requirement that says if explicitly outlined in Zone RA, it can't be in other, it can't be used in other zones. That's problematic for a number of reasons. You know, I as a citizen, go look, try to research what I can and can't do within the ordinances and I, you know, looking at my zoning, I can't see that. The other problem is, take the example of vegetables and fruits and flowers. Those are all expressly permitted things in RA. So that would imply that since they're not mentioned in R1, you know, tear up your vegetable garden, cut down your cherry tree, so forth. So what we're hoping to propose here is a couple of things. Because my wife and I, Bridgette, have worked for a number of years for Ford Motor Company with regard to regulations, we'd like to propose a citizen council to help write this revised ordinance. Mark has been great to work with. He has admitted that, you know, it's a weird policy. He'd like to see it rewritten. When we applied to the zoning board of appeals, they also acknowledged our unique use, you know, it's a pet hobby kind of ownership. It's not for production of eggs. We don't sell anything, that sort of thing. And they also said, yeah, they're working on the policy, but they can't get to it. Understand that there are a million requests of the city and finite resources. So we'd like to propose that we form this committee, quickly come up with a draft language and furthermore that you give us forbearance on the execution of our chickens while doing so. I don't know how close to three minutes I came, but.
You're there, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you. And we have our staff you can speak to afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, please come to the podium.
Robert McCoslin, 2011 Lauts Road. The only reason that you gave a story of what happened during the two days of storm was agenda item. I felt that. Get to respond at that point. But to move forward, not to tell the story again, to ask, how did we get here? How did we get to where a six-inch rain event shut us down? You gotta ask yourself, it was either engineered wrong when it was built or it hasn't been maintained. And I think it's a little part of both. But all I heard from the board was taxes, more taxes. That'll solve it, more taxes. You know, six years we've been taxed as districts for water. I don't know if you look on your tax bill, but you'll see a line and it says water. It's for stormwater. Marie, your answer was maybe we could make more district. We already have these and we're paying for them. The problem is, nobody's doing the work. I've been at Lauts Road and Ford Road for 35 years and you know what? There's never been a VAC truck, never been a Grado, there's never been a ditch cleaner, there's never been anybody even come out and look at it, okay? But the second I put a shovel in the ground there to do my own maintenance, I was in 35th District Court. That's ridiculous. We need to take back our property in charge of it to where, I don't know how many of you ever walked the water course of Canton. Water Course of Canton starts behind the Imagine Theater, runs all the way up to the high school, okay? I've been on every inch of it. What happens is the trees, the ash trees, we had a lot of problems. Boom, boom, there's your problem. You have to maintain it. You know, I know recently we bought a chipper. So hey, I said, great, maybe we'll have a forestry division. I don't know if there's any thought for that. You know, a couple guys, that's all they do every day, you know, hire them for forestry. I mean, it's something that's needed. It's something that would maintain it. I'm not gonna say it's gonna resolve every problem we have, but it's a step in the right direction instead of just tax, tax, tax. And I'd like to.
Thank you.
Graduate Chad and his group and all the people who worked to make that a less eventful event.
Thank you, thank you. Next?
George Miller. Here in the last few weeks, $2.8 million for the art museum on Cherry Hill and Ridge Road, good investment. It flooded with a foot of water. I hope you guys got a lot of insurance, flood insurance. Next thing is, for the last 10 years, this administration, every one of you and beyond, when Yak was sitting here, I begged you to clean the ditches out and that would have stopped some of the flooding out here, Sheldon and Palmer Road in Hagerty. Not one, like he said, not one time. The last time it was done was Jake Dingle Day was here and he's dead and gone back in the 70s. Okay, $84 million for a lot behind Pizza Hut by because you have to expand Ford Road and they've been doing that for 30 years when Poole was here and never got done. Garden City, Westland, it never got widened. So what makes us, you guys, think that you're gonna get it done? You must really know somebody in the front office. All right, let's go to, cut the chase here. On the 24th of this month, there was a power shortage. I needed to be on oxygen. I called it two and it's on record, four and seven. I run across leisure services and dispatch didn't know anything till 7 o'clock if it was open or nothing about it. It's very obvious that you have miscommunications. You know why? My old man, three years ago died, two years before that, same situation I had and this was all ironed out. You guys dropped the ball, the police department especially.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to board, the staff comments. Greg or John? Chief Chad? Wendy? Jamie? Dave? No. Dave, do you want to comment on the chicken, on the ordinances that we have? I mean, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of ordinances that people that can do that, maybe you or Patrick can comment.
I'm gonna have to talk with Chief Bowe about it, so.
Talking about chicken ordinance?
I'm not prepared to talk about chicken ordinance.
Offline, you said? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you guys say offline, you can talk after the meeting? Okay, okay. All right, now we'll have some, so we have the MSD Director and Patrick Sloan online and they write our ordinances and the chief can help you with that, okay, in our process. Thanks. And we'll start, Tanya Ganguly, board comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that we are, we have had a lot of conversations in the community and people have asked us why this has happened and why we had the floods. We have never seen such things that happen and I just want to comment that we have, we have an infrastructure that was, you know, we, our infrastructure is not just the township. A lot of our infrastructure for drains and things like that are also maintained by the county and the state. And Ford Road is, you know, is a state of Michigan road that was flooded. So we, one of, one of the state legislators pointed out that we have some infrastructures here that are Second World War infrastructures and we also need support from the state and federal levels to improve this infrastructure. So it's not just us that we are working with different levels of the government to, you know, help us with this process and climate change is real, these floods are going to happen, these rains are going to happen more often. I had three trees fall in my house and, you know, next to me, an open lot, seven trees fell off. The Colony Swim Club behind my house suffered an extensive damage. So it's, it's going to happen and we are, we, as even our county executive pointed out that we, all the, all levels of government will have to work together to, you know, move forward. So it's not, it's not a solution that can happen so soon. It will take time, that's all I have to say.
Summer?
Just a reminder that September is suicide prevention month and that we do have the 988 Suicide and Crisis Prevention Hotline that folks can use if they're in distress or have suicidal ideation. So just wanted to remind folks of that.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, we, this is our first meeting in September. So I just wanted to take a moment to remember the events of September 11th, 2001. And yesterday was the 22nd anniversary of, of what happened that day. And just wanted to, you know, just remind everyone that we do not forget what happened.
Well, I want to thank all the residents for coming and staying this whole time and, and speaking up. We appreciate your voices. We really do. Also, I want to remind people now that September's here, school is started and the buses are out and about. So please stop if you see a bus with the red. We've got children excited to go to and from school and they don't always look as they cross the street. So just be a little mindful of that. And then lastly, there is, on your winter tax, a lot of times there is a drain, assessment, a drain fee. I think mine was eight cents last year, but often we all live on drains, so there is an assessment fee on that.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody again, tell your friends that Canton Township did not increase our mileage. It was all the state for inflation, so. And also, the drains are controlled by the county. We do have in Canton approximately 80 miles of drains. And so we have been pushing on the county to do some more maintenance and they are pushing the state, they say, to ask for money to do so. But we are asking, we are continually asking, and we'll continue to ask that. Okay, anyone else? Anything else? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Supervisor, I motion we adjourn.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.